Hello. Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission, Thursday, November 14th, 2013, at 7:30, well, a little later, at Brisbane City Hall. Call to order?
Commissioner Cunningham?
Present.
Commissioner Doe?
Present.
Commissioner Minier?
Here.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
The records show Commissioner Reinhardt is absent.
And now, I move on to the, I don't see, the adoption of the agenda.
A motion, we adopt the agenda?
A second now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now, we're, item D is approval of the draft action minutes. August 8th, 2013, regular meeting.
I have no changes.
Yeah, and no edit.
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
I'm fine.
So, a motion that we adopt the draft action minutes?
One second now. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, item E, this is oral communications, and this are communications about something that is not on the agenda tonight. Is there anyone who wants to speak tonight? Okay, I close the oral communications. Written communications, we have something from Western City. I think that's all that is not pertaining to tonight's agenda, so I'll bring those up later.
Did you get the sustainable?
Oh, yeah. Oh. And something from Sustainable Samatao County.
Will we open it?
Would you open it?
Sure.
Do you want to read what it is?
Sure. The commission has received a letter from Sustainable Samatao County regarding indicators for sustainable Samatao County. This is basically a letter of their findings and their sustainability and green building awards event, which is March 14th, was that March 14th of this year or March 14th of next year?
I guess it's next year.
We don't know.
I was going through the chair, I didn't ask.
2014, I'm sorry. Awards program for March 14th, 2014. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item G, old business. Public hearing, 8 Thomas Avenue, design permit DP 113 and grading permit EX 113, design permit and grading permit for development of an approximately 5,101 square foot, single family home with an associated grading of approximately 850 cubic yards on a ridgeline lot within the RBA Brisbane Acres zoning district. Mock Quatch applicant-owner APN 007350370. Staff?
B40, sorry.
Oh, 340. Staff?
Dim the lights here for PowerPoint. So, the matter of the design permit and grading permit application for development of a single-family home at 8 Thomas was continued by the commission from its October 10th meeting. Questions were raised by the commission in that meeting that have been addressed in the agenda report and are, I'll highlight them here. First, the commission requested clarification on the ridgeline ordinance, including its Regarding its history, prior to the current ordinance with, which requires a design permit for a ridgeline site, Brisbane Acres zoning prohibited ridgeline development, so a variance was required for development on ridgeline lots. There were a couple of main concerns with that approach. First, the use of a variance procedure raised legal concerns regarding potential regulatory takings if a variance were to be denied. And experience, secondly, experience on previous applications, including 8 Thomas, illustrated that there was a lack of clarity and a high level of uncertainty inherent in the ordinance. So, in 2011, the city went through the process to amend its ridgeline ordinance. After several planning commission workshops and public hearings, the current ordinance was recommended for approval, and this was by unanimous planning commission vote, then unanimous approval, adoption by city council. So, there was no dissenting opinion on the current ordinance, and this was the first application to be heard under this ordinance. As discussed in our last meeting, instead of prohibiting ridgeline development, the current ordinance calls for a finding of preservation of the public views of the San Bruno Mountain State and County Park that are found to be of community-wide value as seen from the Bay Trail. In applying this to specific projects, there are a few key points to be considered. First, unlike the previous ordinance, the current ordinance clearly allows for development on ridgeline parcels within the Brisbane Acres. These sites are subject to the design permit provisions and are identified in the ordinance with a map. The intent of the ordinance is to preserve views of the San Bruno Mountain State and County Park, not to preserve the Thomas Avenue ridgeline itself, or specifically, the ridgeline of the park beyond. This is shown in the required finding. The ordinance does not establish a bright line threshold to what is or is not permitted. For example, there is not a prohibition in the ordinance against development blocking a portion of a ridgeline which is within the state and county park. That prohibition was in the old ordinance. Rather, the ordinance calls for a case-by-case analysis and for the planning commission to make a determination based on this analysis. It suggested that the commission may ask three questions in looking at this. And those are, would the, first, would the proposed development impact public views of the state and county park from the Bay Trail along the Lagoon or Sierra Point shorelines? If yes to this, are the impacted views of community-wide value? And then, if yes to both of these questions, what measures might be taken with this design permit to preserve those public views? If needed, if needed, the ordinance provides the commission with the tools to modify a project to comply with the required finding. As stated in the ordinance, methods to accomplish this may be by varying the building's ridgeline, orienting the building to minimize the impact of its profile on public views, locating the building on lower elevations of the site, this one is limited in this case due to the HCP requirements, reducing the building, the building's height. And so, these are actually embedded in the ordinance as tools for the planning commission. These methods may be applied through either conditions of approval or through the review of modifications made through this design review process. Regarding private views, during the last meeting, the issue of private view impacts was raised. The ordinance does not protect against private view impacts. There is a required finding that the proposed buildings and structures are designed and located to mitigate potential impacts to adjacent land uses. However, this finding does not address other impacts beyond those adjacent properties, so it would not include farther, properties further away from the site, such as those mentioned on Sierra Point Road or Ross Way. Note that the finding is generally taken to address factors such as glare or shadowing effects or privacy from a proposed building. For example, a building might have impacts on adjacent properties due to such things as scale or location of windows which might loom over another property. In this case, even if the potential view impacts of the apartment building that's across the street were under consideration, these view impacts would be limited since they are on the secondary side of the building. The living rooms and kitchens, along with the larger windows and balconies, all face out to central Brisbane, so it would remain unimpacted by this proposal. Regarding photographic representations, the various sets of photos were provided in the staff report as requested, along with the applicant's photo simulations. As a reminder, the photographs are intended simply as a visual tool to assist the commission in its deliberations on this matter. As we discussed, photos present a narrower view, more focused on a particular subject. They do not purport to simulate or substitute for the in-person viewing experience along those pathways. The intent of the requirement to install story poles was to allow the commission and the community to have a firsthand visual reference for the project, and after having that, that reference, the commission may draw its own conclusions. Further information was also requested on the approved application for 88 Thomas Avenue, immediately to the east, and this was provided in the packet. Also, there were questions about the state and county park boundary and landscaping requirements for this site, and those are addressed in the agenda report, and I won't get into more detail on those unless you have questions on it. As a reminder, with regards to findings, all the applicable findings that were provided in the draft resolution must be made by the commission in order to grant approval of the project. While some findings, especially the ridgeline in this case, may be of greater concern to the community than others on any given project, all of the findings must be made in order Lastly, with regards to permit timing, finally, the State Permit Streamlining Act, the city has until November 29th to make a decision on the project. However, there are no meetings scheduled between now and then. If requested in writing by the applicant, the commission may grant a one-time 90-day Staff recommends conditional approval of the design permit DP 113 and grading permit EX 113 via adoption of the resolution, which contains the findings and conditions of approval. However, the commission has the following options, and, oh, I jumped ahead, I'm already there. First is to approve the project as presented. Second, approve the project with modified conditions. The commission may deny the project or deny it without prejudice, which, if this is done, would allow the applicant to return within the, within a one-year timeframe. Otherwise, he would have to wait a year to return with a similar application. Or, if requested by the applicant, the commission may grant an extension of that 90 days. Finally, whether the planning commission approves or denies the applications, such action would require the appropriate findings to support the decision either way. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Can you explain more about deny the project without prejudice?
So, this is a provision within the municipal code that, that the, if it's stated that in the denial that it is without prejudice, the applicant may return with a similar application at any time. If it is, if it's straight denial, then, then he would have to wait one year before returning with a similar application. So, in one case, you're, you're opening the door to him coming back in a couple months, whatever time it takes. In the other case, he would have to wait.
And the time element, what about if we need extra time having a meeting next week? Is that available on the schedule?
That is, that's something that the commission may want to talk about, whether that's, that's doable or, or the applicant as well, or if it's, if it's needed. I'd suggest you that we hear the, the public and the applicant, and after your discussion, if there's a need for that, then, then that may be possible.
Does anyone else have questions for the staff?
Yeah. So, in order to, to extend that, we need to have 90 days extension, as you mentioned, which we can do it at the end of this hearings and what we decide.
And that would be based on the applicant's request, so the, the commission, if the applicant does not want to request that in writing to you, then the commission would have to act tonight.
Okay, then, in this 90 days period, then we can have the meeting before that, within the 90 days, right?
That's, that's right. That's the outer limit.
So, that might, that might satisfy the concerns that the chairperson had regarding further meeting on this.
Those are a couple of different options, potentially.
Okay. One thing I must say that I liked the presentation today, and some of these things where I, I was familiar with, but I'm sure there are, the planning commissioners were not familiar with in regard to the various options we have, and I think you did a pretty nice job to explain that, and I think we have to keep this for all the projects that we look at it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have no questions at this time.
I'd like to wait till after the public hearing.
Okay. So, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. However, as you can tell, we have a bit of a time constraint. So, I would like to know how many people are thinking they would like to speak tonight? So, I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And there's going to be two, how many people are going to do presentations? One and two. Three. So, we have three presentations. How long do you think the presentations are going to be? I've said, I want us to have enough time so that we have time to discuss this while we're alive and awake. So, I just want to kind of get an idea of giving a fair amount of time to everyone and giving the commission a fair amount of time to really think things through in a awake state, so.
Once you close the public comment, will there be, and when, and you all?
Please come forward.
Once you close the public comment and you all are deliberating, will there be another opportunity for us to speak at all?
No, I don't think so.
No?
Yeah. All right. So, and the people who just came in, are you thinking you'd like to speak as well? No?
No.
Okay. So, we have seven and three presentations, eight and three presentations, of which three are presentations, and I want to give everyone ample time. I think we could do that. If it looks like the presentations are too long, I might ask the speakers to kind of be brief. So, would the applicant like to come forward first? I just want to be fair.
Good evening, planning commission and city staff. My name is Kevin Tran. I am going to be one of the people living at this 8 Thomas Avenue. As noticed in the staff's report, this plan currently complies with all current ordinances and building codes, to my understanding. This plan's been approved before, and it complies with all the current requirements, and since we agree with everything that's been explained by the staff, we do not see a reason for this to be denied. As you know, over several years, the previous owner, Jeffrey Zhang, he spent a lot of time and money in the design and approval process of this house. He has altered the house substantially, from altering the original design of a roofline of 35 feet high down to 15 feet in height. And in 2005, the commission did approve this design. While he received approval and was ready to start construction, just market condition, market conditions and a change in his personal situation prevented him from doing so. But when we purchased the property from the Zhang family, all of the property approvals were in place at the time, and we purchased a approved project. And we, when we came to inspect what we wanted to buy, we saw the community, we fell in love with Brisbane. We saw the plan, and the plan was perfect for what we needed because we, we are an extended family, and I'm not sure if other people would agree, but that is still a family. We take care of our own. We didn't want to change any aspect of the house, but due to multiple requests and respect for our neighbors and the ordinances and other requirements, we have worked hard with city staff to change it to meet the concerns of as many neighbors as possible. We have listened carefully to their comments, and we implemented several changes, including reducing the square footage of the house, taking away its protrusive edges to make it less bulky. We removed the chimney from the plan. We reduced the height of the house. We, we're going to donate 200 square feet of our property to widen Thomas Drive and to build sidewalks on both Thomas and San Bruno Avenue with handicap access at our cost. And on top of this, we will plant over 60 specific trees and shrubs to restore the butterfly corridor habitat, also at our cost. This commission has approved the adjacent lot at 88 Thomas for a new home. My neighbor's project, it's pretty much ready to begin construction before, and it's important to consider the fact that 88 Thomas, the home is situated at a higher elevation. It has even greater mass and impact than this current plan's purposes. And Mr. Johnson, if you could please put up the renderings first? Okay, so, this is the first set of pictures that I rendered. Of course, I'm not, I'm not a professional 3D renderer, so I just used the blueprints and edited them onto the plan itself to the exact heights of the story poles. You see the, the bottom would be the, what, an idea of what the house would look like when situated on the hillside, and you can see that I wanted to go for the full frontal view, so basically what we would actually see the house from just staring straight at it, and you see that it, clearly you could see San Bruno Mountain behind there, unobstructed. Next picture, please. And from here, I also wanted to show Sam, the, the state park, so San Bruno Mountain right behind there from this view, it's not obstructed in any way, you still see the majority of the mountain behind it.
And this view is from where?
This view is from, I don't have the exact location, but if, from along the shoreline, it would be like around the first location, on the, on the furthest right from viewing from the house. Next picture. And this is just a comparison, I used 88 Thomas's story pole to, to show how high their house would be compared to our house. Okay. And, actually, now, if you could go to Ms. Cunningham's photos, View G, I believe?
I, I'm sorry, I don't have all those. There, there was quite a volume of photos, and I didn't, I didn't put them all into a power.
Do you want that? Can you hold on a minute?
Yeah, sure. Yes. And do you mind if I use a laser pointer to indicate what I'll be, what I'll be pointing to?
In a minute. I think we, we need a light, yeah.
Okay, so, um, what am I on? So, I want to use this image because this is one of the images that Ms. Cunningham stated that she needed to be off the, off the regular path to get, and I feel, felt like this would be a worst-case scenario for like a child or someone of a shorter height or someone down in the lagoon to be looking at the house and think that it has an impact, but, sorry. As you can see here, this is the mountainside right there. That is what I perceive as San Bruno Mountain, and this is where the house would be located. I mean, it does protrude into the skyline right there a little bit, but there is no San Bruno Mountain behind there, behind there to actually block. So, this, I feel that this is a worst-case scenario in terms of obstructing anything, but there is nothing left to obstruct, and, that's pretty much all I need for the pictures, yeah. So, at the last meeting, there were some comments regarding like the ridge view development, and basically, then and now, we, we still agree with the staff's report that the view impacts to the state and county park beyond the site would not be considered significant, and the public views are substantially preserved considering most of the mountain, if not all of the mountain, can still be viewed, even with the house there. And I just want to talk, talk a little bit about my family. My, we, we're, we're a hard-working, humble family. We, we're just trying to create a home for ourselves. This is a long-term investment for us. I mean, we're all chipping in. It's not just Mon Quatch buying this house by himself. It's my entire family, we're all chipping in. And basically, this is for multiple generations and multiple stages of life. I mean, not only for my grandparents to live in and die in, but it's also for my mom, it's also for me and my sister to have our, to basically to, to grow up in until any plans change, but we do intend to live here for a very long time. This is a long-term investment, is not just something we plan to build and get rid of. So, we do intend on becoming part of this community. We do want to be here, and that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, why don't you come and make your presentation?
Just to set up. Right, then disconnecting and reconnecting, can you share the dongle? All right. So, I, it's hard to keep things balanced. Yeah, I'll do my best. Just as I say that, I. Oh, you've done this before, haven't you? Let's do that.
This one.
Thank you, sir. That seems good. So, while I set up, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. It's a pleasure and a privilege to be here. Luke Bouchard, Brisbane resident. All right, let me try this. The goal of my presentation is to highlight what I believe to be the fundamental issue with 8 Thomas. The question is, does the structure not preserve those public views of San Bruno Mountain from three points highlighted? A, the community park, B, the Bay Trail along the Brisbane Lagoon, and C, Sierra Point shorelines? The underlining and the delineation by A, B, and C is mine, but the text is verbatim from the ordinance itself. What I think humbly, I'll propose that what was missing, or what is missing from any single camera shot of any view of any, of the angles of, of the photographs presented, is the naked-eyed field of view, is approximately 175 degrees. I quote there the scientific research that substantiates that. 175 degrees is almost a perfect half circle, and to convince ourselves of that, if you take your thumbs and you go like this until you can't see it on the far right and you can't see it on the far left, it's almost a perfect half circle. Of course, the acuity diminishes on the sides, but that's how we experience public views of San Bruno Mountain. It's a mountain. It's majestic. It's, it's a great, awesome sight, and to take it in, a simple camera shot does not do it justice. So, I went along various points of interest along the points that are noted here, so this part right here, I did not go to, the community park, because from the community park, you cannot see the proposed project at all. The second thing that I did is I brought The second thing that I did is I bravely took my bike, it had been a while, and I went around the lagoon like this. And at various points, with my little GPS, I took GPS coordinates of various points, and from those points, I took a bunch of pictures. And the third part is along the shoreline here, I did take various photographs from there. A couple of points that are worth highlighting are AAA here and BBB, and I'll explain those in more detail later. But for each one of the points labeled Point 1, Point 2, Point 3, and so forth and so on, I've got pictures I would like to share with everybody. Now, what I did, as far as the pictures are concerned, I took a digital SLR, 12.2 megapixels. I took a lens that's about this long, whatever the lens is, and I took between 17 and 25 pictures per viewpoint. And so that's what I tried to represent here. So those are the small icons representing each one of the pictures that were taken. And all those pictures, by the way, for anybody who wants to see them for themselves, the original pictures, you'll need a big thumb drive, but I'll gladly share them with anybody who wants them. And what you do, you stitch them together electronically. And what you, I did, is I used a freeware program called Huggin'. It's the best thing since bottled beer. This thing is just absolutely fantastic. And then you take all, in this case, I think it's 20, what is it, 25 pictures on this particular view, and you give it into Huggin', you push a couple buttons, and then it stitches it all together. And I think that this is a representation that approaches the experience of the naked-eye view of somebody standing on the trail.
This, can everybody see this?
Oh, no, you can't. I'm about to zoom in from each one of those views.
It's gonna say maybe we can see it.
Yes. So that's the end of the presentation now. Here's what I want to show. This is a live, well, live, we're connected to the internet, so this is Google Maps, oh, sorry, Google Earth, my apologies. There you go. So I did a couple of things. I went to the site itself. I hope the applicant, and therefore owner of the land, will forgive me, but I went and took GPS coordinates of each one of the poles, just to make sure that we could reference the actual site from this particular view. The other thing that I did is I, whoops, I'm sorry. I went to Point 1 and took a bunch of pictures. Point 1 is the point on the lagoon as you travel south, where you begin to see anything having to do with the proposed project. And the view you get from that is, stand by, there you go. This is what you get. So this is the first point where you start seeing anything at all. And it's hard to see in this picture, but there's a story pole right here, or pardon me, right here. But the important thing about these pictures is that the naked-eye view is even wider than what I'm, whoops, even wider than what I'm showing here. But there's no mistake here. We can see all the majestic icon that San Bruno Mountain is from Point 1. Now let me highlight Point number 2, 3, and so forth. Let me jump ahead and go to a point in particular. I'm sorry, I wish I hadn't done that. There you go. I went to Point 4 here. So let me jump ahead. I won't show all the views unless there are picture, or sorry, requests for me to show all the views. So Point 4, there you go. And let me back out a little bit. Whoops. All right, so let me zoom in on the site itself. Again, this view here, well zoomed in, approaches other views presented by various people to date. So there's no denying that if you go to this point and you take pictures with a zoom in this general direction here from standing here, if you shoot towards the site, you will get something that looks like this. What I think the fair justice we can do to those views is to take in the 175 degrees lateral field of view that you get from the naked eye. By the way, vertically, it's 160 degrees, 160 degrees. And I can't represent that because it would take a few hundred pictures, and I don't have a computer big enough to crunch all these numbers. But as you zoom out to approximate the field of view that you get from the naked eye, this is the project right there, the proposed project. And this thing right here is San Bruno Mountain. This too, all the way down here, that's San Bruno Mountain. With the naked eye, you see a whole lot of San Bruno Mountain anywhere on the lagoon So let me go to Point number 5. So let me zoom in a little bit, just to do justice to where Point number 5 is. It's right here. And just so that we all have our bearings, as I will show the view from Point 5, you will recognize this right here. This part, this sort of beach-like boundary between the water and dry land. And remember, I took pictures in this direction, this direction, this direction, and so forth and so on, like this, to cover approximately the 175 degrees of the naked-eye view. That would be the view at Point number 5. Where is it? My apologies for going back and forth. It's dizzying, I know. So let me show you the full thing. That's the full construct. So the part I wanted to reference, this part right here, the beach-like sort of mass that we see here, is the equivalent of this right here as viewed from Point 5. Now, there's a punchline as we zoom in. And we look at the project, this is the proposed project right here. Zoom in a little bit more. So we can see that from the story poles, this would be higher somewhat than the apartment complex behind. And yes, it does block some of San Bruno Mountain in the back, in line with the antenna farm and some power poles that are going through there. But the real view, in my estimation, is to take it all in. San Bruno Mountain is not something that can be seen on a punctual point. We see a lot of San Bruno Mountain here. And the last point I'd like to highlight, or category of point I'd like to highlight, is I even went on the K there. I don't know what the appropriate term would be in English. We call that a K in French, my apologies.
Fishing pier.
Fishing pier, thank you very much. Well, let's go to the fishing pier now that we have a name for it. There you go. Let me show you that we are in the fishing pier because we can see fishing poles here. But as you go here and you look at the project, you can zoom in. And we do see, where is it? Sorry, it's too close. Let me back out. It's gonna be easier to, oh, there you go. So we see it. And from the fishing pier, it's hard to see because I was so far away, but the poles are approximately the same height as the structure behind the apartment building. And you can see from here that the height at which it would be in line with San Bruno Mountain is on the residential part. So I don't know by heart where the boundaries of San Bruno State and County Park stop, if you will. There's a demarcation at some point between what's residential and what's the state park. I don't know where it is, and I, so therefore I did not draw it, but I suspect that this is in line with the residential parks. So let me zoom out. That's the real view right here. This is a fair approximation of what the naked-eye view would be at Point number 9. And we can see a whole lot of San Bruno Mountain in my estimation. In fact, it's not my estimation. I would contend that this is objectively the view, a view, of San Bruno Mountain. To not see San Bruno Mountain here, I think, is not seeing the forest for the trees. So my contention is that the planning commission has all the data that it needs to make a judgment call as per the question that's highlighted in the Brisbane Municipal Code. I don't believe any delays are required to analyze this situation anymore. And but one man's opinion, I think it should be approved immediately. Thank you very much.
This is such an audiovisual planning commission meeting. See whether this comes up. Is it set on this? Or is it?
It should come on. Plugged all the way in.
Yeah.
It helps if you get our presentation on and go back.
I think it's starting to see it now. It's changed my formatting.
I'll switch and switch back here.
There we go. So what I'd like to show in my presentation is that, first of all, there were questions about my photos last time, and so I would like to show in this that there's general agreement between the photos of the city, our photos, and Karen's. That I disagree with the previous speaker. I feel like the current design is in violation of the Brisbane Municipal Code. And I also will discuss a comparison of 8 and 88 Thomas. And what I hope that we'll consider is that the design can be modified to preserve many of the public views of San Bruno Mountain, state and county park, and that the decision on this design will set an important precedent for the other 11 homes proposed for Thomas Avenue and other homes proposed for the Brisbane Acres ridge lines. So a comparison of the photos, these are four photos. The one on the left is from the city. The one on the right is Beth's and mine. And the one on the bottom left is, sorry, the one on the top right is Beth's and mine. One bottom left is Karen's view from the road, and the one on the bottom right is Karen's view, taking it low tide down the lagoon beach. So, I mean, the key point in getting a reference of what height different photos were taken from is to look at how the house lies relative to the mountain. But since all of them don't have the house put in, we'll use the pine tree behind the house as a stand-in. And so on the city's view, the top of San Bruno Mountain lies pretty much halfway down the V in the pine tree. In our view, shown with that dotted red line, the horizontal line from the top of San Bruno Mountain lies halfway down the V. And from Karen's view from the road, the top of the mountain lies pretty much halfway down the pine tree, or the V in the pine tree. And the one from the lagoon beach, it lies halfway down the pine tree. It's well below the V. So basically, what I'm saying is that our previous photos agree with the city's and agree with Karen's taken from the road. So what I hope to show is that the present design is in violation, that the property is in Brisbane Acres, so the ridge line ordinance applies. The property lies on a ridge line, and the present design blocks public views of the San Bruno Mountain State and County Park that are of community-wide value. So I retook the photos from last time, and this time I took them what I believe to be the average height of, the average viewing height of five foot, two and a half inches tall, using a tripod. And I took the, similarly, to Luke, I took GPS locations so that they can, everything can be verified. And that this, this present design is going to affect views from a significant distance along Sierra Point Parkway for more than two football fields from Point A to Point F, more than 700 feet. And so in my photos, I put 88 Thomas to act as a comparison. And here, what I did is I took the east view of 88 Thomas from the city agenda point, and the story pole 8 marks the top left-hand corner, and story pole 4, top left-hand corner, story pole 2, the top right-hand corner. And also, the portion to the left of the story pole will appear smaller than shown because it lies 30 feet behind the east face. That was well past my abilities to modify, to try to put things into pictures. So I'll show it as being larger.
Could you say that again? I didn't understand.
So that portion that I have an arrow pointing to on the left-hand side?
Oh.
Is that on, it should be on your left, too? Oh, thank you. So this portion here?
Oh.
It's actually behind this front face, so it will appear smaller because this is if, because you're far away and looking up, and because this is behind, it will appear But I mean, that's a small portion of this overall design. And so what we did is we scaled this image, and we roughed out the shaded portions, which the applicant had changed. So let me just go through these six photos. This is the photo taken from Point A. And here, the 88 Thomas is sort of just appearing behind this tree. This design, the 8 Thomas significantly dwarfs the apartment building behind it and blocks the San Bruno Park behind that. Now moving 100 feet, walking 100 feet further south, 88 Thomas is beginning to appear, and 8 Thomas is still blocking a large portion of the park. And one thing to comment on is that 88 Thomas, the commission asked that they remove this, or they modify this portion of the design to step it down the mountain. So this portion originally was, was all the way up to here, to where that story pole had been. And so it did block much more of the mountain. But the planning commission asked that they step the design down the mountain. And I want to point out that that same approach would make a big difference in terms of how this, how this design would affect the views from the lagoon. Going about another 100 and 150 feet further south, here, we now see the full size of 88 Thomas and the full size of 8 Thomas. And 8 Thomas still blocks a tremendous amount of the state and county park behind it. This is one of the central peaks of San Bruno Mountain, and the design basically doubles the effect of the apartment building behind it. What we can see from the 88 Thomas is that its design is designed so that it follows the contours of the mountain and doesn't extend much past it. This is similar to Luke's view, where we see that the design rises, actually rises over the ridge line that's there, the upper silhouette of the mountain, and blocks the remaining part of it. And so in order to mitigate this, the 88 Thomas has a flat roof, while 8 Thomas is proposed to have a peaked roof, which increases its overall apparent height by more than three feet. So there's, that could significantly reduce the effect of the house. So there's, that could significantly reduce the effect of the house. Moreover, the applicant chose to reduce the height of the floors from the previous owner to 11 feet and nine feet. But instead of dropping, keeping the base level the same, so that it would have dropped the height of that house down two feet, he, he actually raised those two floors up from, from the ground level so they wouldn't have to grade as much, which is a reasonable choice. However, it doesn't mitigate the view. If instead, he had reduced those floors, those floor heights and, and dropped the whole thing down, that also would have reduced the effect on the views. And then, this is the final view I show. Obviously, there are other views. But here, the, the design pretty much obscures the final peak of, of San Bruno Mountain. Obscures both the ridgeline and parts of the park. And the, and a lot of the effect of this is also from the relative bulk of, of the design. That if, if this part to the left was reduced and stepped down, like eighty-eight Thomas, and if the roof lines were made flat rather than peaked, that much of this effect could be mitigated. So the, to conclude, we believe that it violates the ridgeline ordinance. That while visually, we can see up to 175 degrees, often, we look at a much smaller view, like when I'm looking at Haji's face right now. Or that we look at things that are smaller in size. Or we look at the, a moon, for instance. That this, this would take more than twice the diameter of the moon, of the full moon rising. So that it's, that it's this mixture of what we perceive. And while we see in expanse, and visually, we also see things narrowly. Moreover, this is, the decision here is not just one house. The ordinance is to preserve public views. But the decision we make here affects what happens on the rest of the ridgeline. And so any blocking of views that this house does, we can assume that every, you know, that there'll be five or six other homes that can have the same effect on the ridgeline. So, and I think I've talked about how, among many other possibilities, a proposed design could be modified, hopefully, to preserve public views. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
Okay, so what you're saying is that you felt that the roof could be flatter? And that the floors could be modified down, and you think how many feet?
Well, he, I mean, if we want to keep his 11-foot and his nine-foot floor, that, they could be dropped down two feet with, I think, was the, the previous grading, the grading for the previous owner.
And, and what you're saying is that, from your estimation, that if, if the roof could be flattened and drop down, the height drop down two feet, total, including the roof?
No.
No?
The roof drops it down about, I think, I mean, I'm not sure about the complete numbers, but I think the roof drops it down about three feet. And the peaked roof would drop it down about three feet. And then the, the, dropping the house down to the previous grading, I think it would drop it another two feet.
So that would drop it at about five feet?
Yes.
And then you were saying that you were thinking that the roof line could be staggered down on the, which side?
On, exactly, on the south side, similar to what was done with eighty-eight Thomas. And it's not so much for this view, but it's for those early views.
On the left side, you're saying?
On the left.
Or south?
South is probably more.
South side, okay.
Because the, the early views, it's really that side of the house which, which blocks the, the park.
And, and those are the, all the recommendations? I noticed you made all these recommendations while you were showing things, but I just want to make sure I got all the recommendations that you're suggesting.
Madam Chairperson is already on your screen here.
Oh.
That he shows.
Excuse me?
Shows that reducing the height of the southern portion to the one floor, that means you have to take away the one floor from the southern portion.
Right.
That's a very significant change.
That would be a significant change.
That, that was what was done, that's what the owners of eighty-eight Thomas did. Moreover, they have a 600-square-foot atrium that extends two floors in the center, that increases the bulk. And so much of the, much of the, that extra floor that is removed could be taken up with that atrium by, by putting living space in the atrium.
But that will, that will change the design altogether.
Yes, it would change the design.
Yes, we start from square one, pretty much.
I don't know about that.
Any other questions?
Just about the photographs?
Sure.
I think the one thing that needs to be made clear, or you need to make clear to everybody, is that none of these photos are taken with a bird's eye view. Mine certainly weren't. My photographs are taken with a 200-millimeter lens. And the photos that you're showing are extremely zoomed in, correct?
They are taken with a Canon Powershot.
Right, and they're really zoomed in. So this is not photographs from the lagoon trail from your eyes. This is, this is very zoomed in pictures, correct?
These, these are zoomed, yes, of course.
Right. So you've used zoomed photographs to, to make this point. And you used my photographs, and my photographs are very zoomed in, to get any of this effect from the bay trail with the naked eye. Can you see that?
Yes. You can see, you can see all of those story poles. In fact, you can, this one, this image was taken with a higher power zoom. But for the, all the other ones that I've labeled, that's with a Canon Powershot. And you can, you see better detail with your eye than you see with a camera.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. What time is it?
It's 8:34.
8:34, okay. I have one more. I have only four, I think, of these. Are there more?
Did anybody fill one of these in?
Whoever wants to speak, Michelle did.
Beth Yost is here.
Oh.
Yeah.
And Michelle. So anyone else who wants to speak, I need to see these? Okay. Okay, so while we're waiting for everyone else, Yijuan Ta, would you like to come up and speak?
Actually, I kind of wanted to hear what the other people, people, I'd rather be the CEO.
Okay. Beth Grossman? All right, Michelle Salmon?
I can go now. I have no problem going now.
Okay, everybody be sort of brief.
Michelle Salmon, Brisbane resident. I have questions, and I'd like them all answered. And some of them are addressed to the city. So prior to 2011, how long had the ridge, the original ridgeline ordinance been in effect?
I had looked at that. I, I forget the exact date, but I, it was late 90s.
Okay, late 1990s. We had an ordinance that said you could not build on a ridgeline. And that was the ordinance that was changed in, prior to 2011, to accommodate people being able to build on a ridgeline. But it was very clear for a very long time that people in Brisbane did not want people building on ridgelines. Let me just state that. Then I'd like to know, what was the actual purchase date of the property, when it changed escrow, between the prior owner and the current owner? Because was it before or after the view ordinance was passed? And I think that's a critical point to note. Then, I would like to know, I'd like clarification of whether the 650-square-foot courtyard that's enclosed by four walls is counted as part of their 25% lot coverage or not? I think that's very relevant because even if it doesn't have a roof, if it's enclosed by four walls, it's considered a structure. And I don't think that's, I think that should definitely be considered as part of their lot coverage. Especially since this is already a substandard-sized acres lot in which a variance was granted quite a while ago to allow them to build one unit. You are supposed to have a 20,000-square-foot acreage lot in order to build a unit on it. So variance was made there. And I'd like to know if the 650-square-foot, fully four-walled, enclosed atrium area is considered open space or part of their lot coverage? And then when they said it was limited due to HCP, et cetera, because the aridage coverage of the courtyard is too large for the already substandard-sized lot. Then I'd also like to know if the current story poles have been validated as accurately placed and positioned regarding their height, representing the completed building? Because I know that we've had a lot of trouble with, with height in, in Brisbane in terms of judging whether it's accurate or not. And so I'd like to know whether the height of the poles have been validated by the city attorney, by the city staff, by whoever says that height is at the correct height? And so I'd kind of like to know, since we're basing a lot of stuff on images and looking at the story poles. So then I'd like to state that it's very important to understand that the law has changed since 2005, when the property at eighty-eight Thomas was granted a variance. And eighty-eight Thomas should in no way be considered any kind of precedence for anything else that happens on Thomas. Because they were granted a variance before this law was changed. And actually, they were granted a variance before the original ridgeline law was changed. So I do not think that you can look at eighty-eight Thomas as any kind of precedent-setting existence just because it happens to be the only other thing that has an open building permit on Thomas. So I think it's really, really important also to note that the current ridgeline law is about buildings now being built on ridgelines, which were not allowed before 2011 without a variance, blocking the views of San Bruno Mountain. Not blocking the ridgeline of San Bruno Mountain, but blocking views of San Bruno Mountain. And I think that's very important. And Storz made a point of that in his presentation. But I think that is, was a confusing issue during the last meeting and also during some of the presentations. And while many people see the 175-degree view, that was really an impressive presentation. And sometimes I look at San Bruno Mountain at the 175-degree view, and I'm just in awe. But over the course of the last several years, I've done a lot of looking at the mountain from views all around the bay and all around the area and on freeways. And every time I catch a glimpse of San Bruno Mountain, I'm like, oh, there's the mountain. Wow, you can see it from here. Wow, you can see it from there. And I could have gone down there and taken a bunch of pictures like everyone else did. But instead, I spent a lot of time actually stopping and looking with my own eyes up at the mountain and thinking about what it would look like if that view that I was looking at, both in the big picture and in the little picture, were gone. And every single thing that you create a variance for takes a bite out of that view. And pretty soon, you have a mouthful, and pretty soon, you have a full plate. And pretty soon, you have a banquet table full of little bites that you've taken out of the view of San Bruno Mountain. Now, you can say the trees are blocking the view already. But trees are somewhat temporary compared to housing. A house built will probably be there for 100 years, or the trees probably will not. And the particular part of the mountain that it's going to be covering is where in the past, there have been incredible blooms of Clarkia, farewell to spring, where that whole little hillside there turns into kind of a little pinky-purple thing going on in, in the late spring. And so you have to think about, you're not just looking at the big picture. You're looking at every, the eye sees every pixel of the picture. And different people see different things when they look at San Bruno Mountain. And, and that is why we had the law in the first place about not building on the ridgelines. And we've perverted that law. And about preserving the views of San Bruno Mountain Park. And that's why this subsequent ridgeline view law was put into place. And every time you make an exception because your heartstrings are pulled, because you feel sorry for this family, or that family, or some other family, and you make an exception, it's another bite. And it's another precedent-setting exception to what the general population of Brisbane said they wanted. And so as sympathetic as I am to this situation for this particular family, it doesn't change why the rules were made in the first place and why there was a law that was put in place to protect the views of San Bruno Mountain and the overall quality of life for everyone. And if you're going to make an exception there, and an exception here, and an exception there, and I'm sure someday I'll come up here and say, I want an exception too, you know? But where do you draw the line? And I think that tonight is where you draw the line and say, we put this ordinance in place. I'm sorry that you weren't well-informed about it when you bought the property from the prior owner, who was well-informed about it, because he had the property even before the original ridgeline ordinance was changed, that dated back from the 1990s. And so, you know, ignorance of the law is no excuse. You know, you make a U-turn over a double-yellow line in a business district, and you didn't know that was part of the California vehicle code, and you get a $500 ticket. Well, you can go plead your case, which is what these people are doing now, but you still broke the law. And that's what it is.
Thank you very much.
And can you answer these questions that I asked? Because I think they are all relevant.
Okay. So... Are you ready to answer any of them?
At your pleasure.
Shall we answer them, if you want to? All right. We answered question one. Number two is, how long, when was this purchase made? How long ago?
Staff does not have that information. You might have, ask the applicant.
Okay. Okay. This is a big question. The 650-square-foot interior courtyard is, how is that factored into the square footage of the size of the lot?
Since it does not have a roof over it, it's not considered as part of the square footage of the house.
Can you show me the ordinance where that's allowed?
Are we having, through the chair, please?
Yeah, no, I want to hear more about that. Is that considered part of the square footage of the land outside? Or it's just sort of empty?
It's part of the gross square footage of the lot. And it was not included in the calculation for the square footage of the house since it does not include a roof. And this is really, it's a carryover from the original variance, which made the same conclusion on that.
Okay. And then the current story poles, they were validated?
We got certification from a licensed engineer on the story poles.
Okay. So... The next question is, how the law changed from the time 88 Thomas, 88 Thomas... Was approved? And this particular application?
So this was explained in the staff report. It's the difference between a prohibition on ridgeline development, which required the variance, and the current requirement for a design permit. So again, the original prohibition raised concerns regarding takings of property, regulatory takings of property, by potentially denying a permit. So it put the city in a tenuous position legally. And also how the ordinance was worded led to, as Jamil was on the commission at that time, months literally on this project and essentially uncertainty in terms of how that ordinance should be applied to a particular project.
Thank you very much. All right. Okay, we're going to move on to Amy Dondy.
Hi, Amy Dondy, Brisbane resident. I'm going to be really brief. I just, my biggest concern is if this proposal was approved, is the precedent that it sets. And for, because there is a lot of other proposals that will come up for other properties in the Brisbane Acres. And if this one starts to block the ridgeline, the next one's going to say, well, you let them go, I want my turn. So that's the concern that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Darby Ames? Is it A-M-E-S?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I can appreciate the applicant.
Annie Ames.
I can appreciate the applicant trying to build this wonderful home. I'm sure it would be nice. But I also feel that the beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And when I look at this mountain and I see that part of the mountain, this stands out in my eye as something significant. And I'd rather not see it in its current shape and would like the recommendations made to alter the roof lines, flatten the roof. If they could step down, if they have to redesign it, then so be it. Because what's at stake here is this is forever. This house goes in, we're locked in, there's no changing. And you guys have a big responsibility, either to deny this or allow it, which would usher in probably more of the same request. Again, whittling it down, eroding our views of this hill. I would like to say that trails in the future will probably be more active. There'll be probably more people enjoying these trails. We may even open up more trails. And this would be another visual impact. I just, I can't echo enough Stor's views in his presentation. I think Luke did an excellent presentation too. I know there's a lot of work, but I think we've had enough of this. And I'm sure you guys are tired of this. And I think it's time to really, you know, lay down the law and deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Lee?
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Aaron Lee. I lived here in Brisbane for about three and a half years. And sadly, my girlfriend convinced me to move to Pacifica a couple of years ago. We're now looking to buy back in and we're really excited about coming back to the community because we both loved it and realized what a mistake it was to move away. I have to say that listening to both sides of this story as maybe a bit of an impartial observer, I feel tremendously motivated to point out that, you know, the property rights of, the property rights of an owner, the right of an owner to develop a piece of property in the way that pleases them is an important part of the decision that one makes to move to a community. And I feel that preventing this proposal from passing through as it stands really would, really would for me lessen my desire to come back and lessen my motivation to try to build my home here. So I hope the commission does approve this proposal as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ron Davis? If anyone wants to come back after we're finished, they're welcome to come back. I think we're going, we have time.
Hi. I won't reiterate everything I said at the last meeting, but I will just say that all of those pictures and how it's laid out, and if you go down there, if I go down there and look at it, this little speck, as far as in consideration for the rest of the mountain, for me doesn't block, doesn't block anything. I will say though, that when I look at the hill, I might have a different impression since I've worked with so many people in this town. I can stand anywhere in town and look up at the hill. And I don't see houses, I don't see ugly houses. Of course, I'm in the house business, but I'm also more than that in the people business. And so I see people. I see people all up on the hill. And when I look up on the hill, I want to see these guys. And I think that, for me, that's what makes this town special, is the people. The diverse people, you know, whether they're going to paint their house orange and it stands out all over town, or if they're going to have a little house or a bigger house. It's the people that make up this town. And so I don't think that you should deny him because I think that if it blocks anything, looking one way or the other, it's like looking at any of our faces with a magnifying glass, you're going to see some imperfections. And I think that at this distance, it's kind of the same thing. Anyway, I would hope that you could move it along and approve him. Thank you.
Okay. So Beth?
I just want to underline that the commission had previously asked the owners of 88 Thomas to modify the design. And I just wanted to underline that that was done before this ordinance was in effect. And so that even then, without the ordinance, it was clear to the commission at the time that these really large houses on the ridgeline were problematic for our town. And that, I also want to point out just the cumulative effect of, that there will be, at least as we know, that are down the pipeline, 12 more of these very large 5,000 square foot homes that are slated to be built on Thomas Avenue. And that, so when we do look at the wide view of the beautiful mountain, as Luke showed in his presentation, that will have a very different impact when there's 12 really large homes there. In terms of the, I would also just like to point out that the lagoon area is slated in the Brisbane, sorry, the Baylands plans to be one of the primary open spaces and recreation area for Brisbane. So that view corridor of the, where Stor showed his pictures from, will be of community-wide value when that area is developed and that is coming soon. And finally, I wanted to say that if we don't uphold this ridgeline ordinance, the city is opening itself to a long list of Brisbane Acres applications that will point to this precedent and ask for exceptions. So I thank you so much for giving this application the deep consideration that it deserves. And I really hope that you will deny it and at least ask them to mitigate the way that it's blocking the views. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And... Is it Yi Quanta or Quanta Yi?
Juanita.
Juanita, I'm sorry. Oh, that's a J. Excuse me.
Hi, Juanita Yi. I'm a Brisbane resident. I just happened upon this issue and really didn't have any views one way or the other about the ridgeline, him building his home, them not being approved. My feeling is, I mean, I live in Brisbane Acres. I'm right on Herald Road. And you can't get any more into the Acres than what I am. I didn't know that Thomas Hill was considered part of Brisbane Acres. That's new to me. I can understand why they want that ridgeline protected. But from the pictures that I saw, I didn't see a real big difference between the apartment building and the home that this family is planning on building. I guess maybe I should get out there and look at the spots that they were talking about and looking up on the hill. But from the pictures that I saw, I didn't see a real big variance. And I could still see that peak that's behind. I see the power lines, I see the little peak. I mean, I think that a house on that home would be a welcome view. I would love to be able to welcome a new family into this community that would give them the opportunity to be a part of this community. It sounds like they're in here for the long term. I don't think that this is a project they want to build and then just move away. I don't know these people, have no interest, you know? I don't have anything vested in this other than I think that family is very important. They have an extended family, they care to take care of their elders, they value it. And those are the same things I value. And if I could afford to build a home as big as theirs, that would probably be something I would be willing to do. I don't see that it's going to be an eyesore. I don't see how you can get 12 houses on Thomas Avenue. I don't know. I mean, I don't know how many more houses you can put on that side of the street. But I think that if he is willing, and it sounds like he has done what he can to bring the ridgeline down or the height of his home down, I think that it would be really nice if the community would try to welcome him. And, you know, hopefully we can work something out that's satisfactory to both the family and the residents who are so passionate about the mountain. And, you know, I'm just as passionate about the mountain, but I'm just as passionate about family. That's it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone who has not spoken? All right. We still, it's nine o'clock and I know Michelle wants to speak one more time. Please come up.
In addition to the views, one of my biggest problems with this project is the lot coverage. And I brought this up at the last meeting and I'm bringing it up again. Because the whole reason for a lot coverage ordinance is to maintain open space, open areas, views, sheds, and corridors. And I don't consider a 650 square foot interior courtyard, whether it has a roof on it or not, to be in the spirit of the ordinance. Now, you said a few minutes ago that that was approved in the original plans when they gave a variance to this project back in what year? 2005, I believe? And I want to know, is there any other project where that has been a determining factor for their square footage, lot coverage in the Acres? Or is this a one-time thing? Because I think it is a very wrong interpretation of lot coverage. This is an interior courtyard of 650 square feet that changes the 25% lot coverage by quite a bit if you actually count that as lot coverage. How could you not count that as lot coverage if it's completely surrounded by four walls? You think a bird's going to fly through? Okay, I think that was a very wrong interpretation and it was granted under the previous owner's plans as part of a variance. But you have design authority over this as part of this ordinance and you can ask for a new design. And I suggest that you deny the project without prejudice and allow them to come back to you in a short amount of time with a better design that meets the law. And I think that's a very doable thing. They will still have a huge house, but it will be in the spirit of the ordinance, preserving the views and preserving the open space and not counting a 650 square foot interior courtyard as part of open space. I don't know who could ever interpret it that way and I'm ashamed that we did. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. It is nine o'clock. I suggest we have a break at this point.
Good idea.
And meet in 10 minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, I have lost, um, one. I, oh, actually, it's interesting. In every family, there are two, um, one is on a motorcycle, one is, uh, three, four, they're all populated. It's like, you know, I'm on the, oh, yeah. Okay. Well, I remember, um, I was kind of each time. Oh, okay. I did, I did, I had on a bike, so you don't leave. I did the last thing, you know, hang it after, and then you go to the bathroom, and you don't clean up. I just, I, I, I just lost so many people. I mean, I know, it's like, and I just have, I'm, 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 I'm hooked, right? I was just, uh... I missed it. Uh, yeah, I'm trying to remember.
All right. So at this time, we are closing the public meeting. Do I need to get us...
I make the motion to close the public hearing on this application.
A second now. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right.
Time for discussion.
It's time for discussion. Who wants to start first?
I will say that Ms. Cunningham is the first one to go because she has done tremendous amount of work.
Through the chair. If, Mr. Munir, if you can speak into your mic.
If you speak into the mic, okay. I was suggesting that Ms. Cunningham should go ahead and start discussing various points regarding the views and the way the pictures were taken and all that because she has the most knowledge. And I want to go on the record saying that, you know...
You what?
Pardon?
I hate to say this. I forgot to talk about all the different letters that we received. We can do that later. I just want to put it in the public, and I'm sorry to have interrupted, but please continue.
Okay. So what I was saying is that Ms. Cunningham did a very good job in pointing out differences in all the pictures that were taken by other citizens here. And it's interesting to see the differences in terms of one opinion over the other, in terms of the same view. And that was my reason when we were trying to revise this particular ordinance. At that time, I warned the planning commission over and over again that if you're going to have a regulation like that, which is subject to so many variables, you're not talking about just one variable, but, you know, I can't even count in terms of the person who's looking at it, the personal, the particular view of the person, the locations. This is not a small area where we're talking about. And also the overall impact. It's not very clear in the ordinance as to what extent we're looking at as an impact. Are we looking at that the whole mountain should be covered or just a tiny portion of that should make a point that it's blocking the view? It's not very clear in that ordinance. And that was my reason at that time, and when I was in the commission, I was at the commission at that time, suggested that this particular requirement should be scrapped unless and until we come up with a very good language and very, very good means to really understand and explain to all parties what we're looking at it. Because if you're going to have a regulation that's not very clear and is subject to so much interpretation, there is no way in the world us five commissioners here will be able to make a decision based on one view or the other. And that's what the situation we are now. And whatever is not affecting me in terms of the, you know, this particular project is not blocking the view, it may be different for person number two. The reason is there are no clear guidelines in this particular ordinance. And that was my point from the very beginning, that if you're going to have the guideline like, I mean, if you have an ordinance like that, you should have a specific point where you say from point A, this is on the GPS number, scale number so and so and so, at the height of six feet with a zoom lens of whatever the strength, you're going to take the picture, and if it blocks the view of the mountain by 10% or 20%, then it's rejected. But this is not the case here. This is a totally subjective analysis we are to do here. And in that respect, I will say that Ms. Cunningham did a terrific job bringing the differences in terms of what the photographs were presented and what she personally went and took the pictures. And you can tell tonight also Luke's pictures were giving us a totally different, you know, view in terms of whether it's blocking or not than the other presenters that were there. Their pictures, from their point of view, trying to present that it's blocking the view, but blocking the view by how much? Is a little portion of that, you know, blocking the bottom bridge, bottom of the mountain is considered significant? We don't know. This particular ordinance doesn't say. So that's my problem with this whole ordinance, and that's why it's a very judgment call here tonight. And whichever way we decide, I hope you will understand that we are in a position that is totally a subjective decision. And whatever we say, hopefully you will understand why we come to that conclusion. So with that, I again suggest that Ms. Cunningham, I'd like to hear from her, her views on all this, one particular aspect we're looking at, is views. I don't think there are many other issues with this particular project.
Okay. You're going to be disappointed. I have one comment about the photographs because I've already made my comments. Actually, I'd like to ask staff to clarify what the intent of the law is. What is the intent of the law? Is the intent of the law to, say, by any means, we can prove that a project is breaking a ridge line or blocking views of San Bruno Mountain with a telescope, with binoculars, with zoom lenses, or with the naked eye? What is the intent of that law?
Well said.
It refers to views, preservation of views that are found to be of community-wide value. I would say that views have to do with the person out there walking and not necessarily with a zoom camera. It's essentially, but again, it is subjective. It's not, again, looking at the ridge line. It's looking at the mountain as a whole. And does that, any particular proposal, would it, would it, would it block those views that are of community-wide value? And really, does it take adequate measures, if so, to alleviate that?
Okay. I would suggest that we clarify that law moving forward so it is locked in place, unless, John, you've got a different answer?
Well, I mean, clearly, when the commission went over this whole view ordinance and the ridge line ordinance, you know, two years ago or a year and a half ago, two years ago now, you had that issue, you know, it was up for consideration at that point in time. There's a real hard situation to create a black and white line, a physical datum point that you're going to connect the dots on parcels and say thou shall not exceed elevation. You pick the elevation from point to point. It's just very difficult to do when you're talking about a ridge line, parcels that, again, are viewed from multiple places that are considered to be, you know, they're different values based on people's perspective. So I'm not sure that you can ever really, as part of the ordinance, come up with this black line, this clear line that thou shalt do this and thou shall not do that. I mean, part of the whole discussion of community value and why the design permit is subject to a public hearing process is for you to obtain input from the community as to the perception of community value and this level of encroachment or this level of blockage being of community value or not. And, you know, unfortunately, for good or for bad, that's kind of your position, is to weigh this testimony and make a recommendation or decision which is appealable to the city council, one way or the other. But really, that's your charge, is to kind of weigh the various perspectives and make a decision.
Okay. Okay. Well, that being said, since that's not clear, and we didn't make it clear in our recommendation to city council to write that law, and given that the photographs that have been submitted are incredibly zoomed in, and in my particular photographs, mine were taken with a 200-millimeter lens on a 20-megapixel camera, so I have great zoomability. So on all of the photographs that I took, where there was even a slight ridge line deviation, when I zoomed right in on those photographs that I took and saw what we were disturbing, if we are going to be able to use zoomed-in photos to prove a point, then we should be able to zoom in as far as we can go. And what I did with those photographs when I zoomed in is all I saw was the radio towers on the top of the hill. That's the view that's being disturbed by the roof of this house. So that was concerning to me because that doesn't tell me that is of significant value as a view block, that we're going to block the view of the radio towers, which is essentially what these photographs are proving. If you zoom in on any of these photographs, and we can use mine and play with them any time you want, when you zoom through that ridge line on that rooftop, what we're seeing is the radio towers on the top of the mountain. That's it. So I had a problem with that. My next question is also for staff, and sorry, I am going to take a little bit of time because I want to be as thorough as I can with my questions and then my comments. How many times has this proposed home been modified from the original, when this home was originally designed, how many times was it modified before it was then sold to the new owners? And how many times have they now modified it to get us to this point?
I don't have an answer for that. I know there were, this is my recollection from being in those hearings, was that there were incremental changes, and then there was a new architect, David Stoll, who was hired after the first design. And so there was a major change in the design, and that was the latest variance that was approved. So there were two variances essentially that were approved. One was for a, essentially, a much taller house, as I recall. And the applicant came back with a different variance later on. So essentially, two different designs before this one that you can markedly say, okay, this is one design, this is the next. But there were incremental changes.
Right. So since the new owners took this property, they have modified the design downwards again, correct?
That's correct.
And it's a smaller home than was originally approved at this point?
That's correct.
And can you tell me what is the rock structure on that mountain, on that side of the mountain? Is it shale?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. I think it's shale. And if it's shale, moving that house down the hill creates a new set of issues. The rest of that mountain is shale, so that means slippery rocks. So the further we move that house down the hill, in my opinion, the more issues we potentially bring up that are different kind of issues. Just want to let everybody know that's what I'm thinking on that.
But we don't really know.
The rest of the front side of the mountain is shale. But I just wanted to ask that question. The question about the lot coverage regarding the courtyard has already been answered. This is a little off, but I really want to ask this question. I think it's really important. How many objections did the city receive relative to the San Diego court properties and the fact that they were built way above the ridge lines and on contiguous... and on contiguous virgin San Bruno Mountain property? Was there any?
I don't have a recollection of that. I don't know. I don't think it drew nearly the attention that this did, but I don't have the number.
And with 88 Thomas, how many objections were raised relative to the size of that home?
I don't have the number on that, but I don't, my recollection from the file record was that it was not objected to by the community. It was modified, as we talked about, by the commission.
Okay. I have one more question for staff. Aren't we actively encouraging multi-generational homes in Brisbane and second-in-law units and things like that to fulfill certain requirements by the state?
The, excuse me, the secondary dwelling units do actually count towards state credit for the lower-income housing. Although off-the-radar multifamily, single-family homes, I think, serve that same purpose, but they're not officially recognized in that same way.
There's no policy in the housing element that speaks to encouraging multi-generational housing. So, you know, to me, that's probably of a market-driven issue as to client and property owner desire.
And we don't have any limitations to the size of homes? Do we have a law that says thou shalt not build a home any bigger than X square feet in Brisbane?
Well, within the Brisbane acres, the upper limit is 5,500 square feet. Within central Brisbane, there is not. There's a floor ratio maximum, which is 0.72. So you could go conceivably higher within central Brisbane.
And this house is 5,100 square feet and 88 Thomas is 5,400 square feet, correct?
That sounds about right.
The one thing that hasn't been discussed relative to making any changes on this property was, and this was brought up many times, and the butterfly habitat and the butterfly corridor has been brought up. I feel very sensitive to that. And with that said, I did ask for references from San Bruno Mountain Watch for experts that I could speak to. I called four of the top experts in the country relative to San Bruno Mountain and I asked them questions about, I asked them all, when I had them on the phone, would you go to Google Earth and look at this property so I can ask you some questions? That happened with three people so far and I have a call back from one more who was just too busy to talk to me. I did ask them about butterfly habitat, butterfly corridors relative to these property. And the answers I got were that basically to rehabilitate and restore that property to attract butterflies would be prohibitively expensive. They didn't think it was likely that it could happen relative to my questions, relative to planting native habitat that could attract butterflies. This I didn't know. The plants are very picky relative to the soil. So we don't even know if there's soil in that area that would support butterfly plants. And the other thing that was brought up by two of the leading biologists in this area was that they felt it was highly unlikely that we could establish a butterfly habitat in this area and that a take permit would definitely not be issued by Fish and Wildlife to do such a thing. And even if we were successful in establishing a butterfly colony on this property, it is so small and it's already surrounded by urban areas that they felt we should spend our money in areas where we could be more successful. We could have an isolated colony that could produce genetic issues. So that was my homework on that because I felt that the butterfly corridor and everything in this area was really important. But they kind of blew me out of the water relative to saying we are probably not going to be able to do that. So that was somewhat disappointing. If I were making suggestions about changing this property, what I noticed on all these photos is that whole hill is naked. It's got a lot of dead vegetation on it and there's no trees. If we had trees in that area, would certainly make that whole area look so much better. So that would be something that I would like to consider making modifications to the existing application relative to landscaping. And that's all I have to say right now. No?
I have to say that I'm very impressed with the fact that this is such a big issue for us and I'm glad to be a part of the discussion, although it's very difficult. And I'm hoping, I'm incorporating the previous commissioners before me in their comments. I agree with them. And if you'll bear with me, I have about two pages' worth of comments and feedback. So when, in reviewing all of the input from the community and the staff and the commissioners, there are basically general themes that you see coming up. So one of them is about upholding the law and I think that's what we're all here, we're supposed to be doing.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Uphold the law.
Uphold the law.
Yeah. So I don't think that there's a contention that we're all here for that. But how we apply the law as it is and as it exists is gonna be different, obviously. Even the commissioners are having differences of opinion and the community is having the difference in opinion. So there are things we have to acknowledge about that. What happened pre-2005, no longer is this, right? And so we have to deal with the current law, which says that we are allowed or the community is allowed to develop on Thomas Avenue. That's something that none of us can contend. There's no contention there. That's something we have to accept. We are asked, the commissioners are asked to enforce the law. That's what we're doing. Again, the question is how do you enforce the law? Can we please everyone? Obviously not, right? Another big theme, the second one, would be precedence, the concern from the community that we're setting precedents. But again, when we set precedents, we have to realize that we can set precedents as a pro or as a con. So whatever our decision is, it's gonna be a precedent-setting potential. But I think that the law incorporates that aspect and that concern by allowing us to do a case-by-case analysis. Meaning, a precedent would not be applicable if the conditions on which the precedent actually exists do not exist in the current case, right? So I think that's something that, if we keep that in mind, it may clarify some of the issues and eliminate potentially some of the issues that are raised here. I think the third theme is about how the ordinance methods or suggested methods are being applied here. So here, I'm hoping the staff can help me out. I wanted to verify that the applicant has done some varying in terms of building the roof line. Is that true? Because one of the ways that we are talking about in terms of the methods on page G.1.3, it says the ordinance also provides the commission with tools to modify projects to ensure that it complies with the required finding. The findings being the things that we have to find in order to approve or disprove this application. So as stated in the ordinance, methods to accomplish this may include varying the building's roof line to reflect the ridge line's topography. Have they done that or tried to do that?
They have not. Essentially, you have the elevations on the wall there which show that the roof line is fairly even across, unlike 88 where it drops down by a story. So that is not something that has been done with this project. It's essentially, that's in the code as a measure that can be used if you see that the view impacts are significant.
Okay, so the second suggestion is that the orienting the building to minimize the impact of its profile upon public views. Have they, in your opinion, done that?
The building location is essentially, I don't know that you would put it anywhere else besides where it's located, so.
So there's not much option?
I don't see a whole lot of option there.
Okay. And then the third is locating the building on the lower elevations of the site.
The one corner of the building is at the 20-foot setback that's required per the HCP permit. And so they can't move any further down the site at that corner. If they, I suppose, rotated the building, they could get part of the building further down the site, but I don't know that that would actually accomplish anything in terms of mitigating the views.
Okay. And then the last is to reduce the building's height below the maximum permitted in the district, which according to the applicant was reduced from 35 to 15.
The height limit is 35. The total height of the building is closer to, it's in the table, but it's closer to 25. It's 15 from the one-story side, but closer to 25.
So closer to 25, which means there's a reduction in 10?
Roughly.
From the original?
Roughly speaking.
Okay. And so the fourth theme that seems to resonate with everyone is the fact that everyone wants the commission to read the ordinance in compliance or at least to require the applicant to be in compliance to meet restrictions. So here, I think, is where Commissioner Munier's point about the subjectivity comes in and it plays a really big factor in how we determine it. So for lack of a better term, it's a degree, right, of compliance. We can't really say that the degree of compliance does not exist at all. It does. The applicant did try to attempt to mitigate some of the, in response to some of the community concerns. Then to complicate matters, we have to balance the fact that this is a community-wide public view issue versus the property rights or familial rights, which are constitutional rights of an individual, right? So that's a balance that we can strike at. It's a huge gamut and you can go up and down that spectrum, right? And as a community, we also have to remember that this applicant is also a community member, not just the current existing community members who have homes or rent homes here. So when we, as the commission, look at the community and the community concerns, that has to be a part of the equation. Coupled with this is that whole idea that we all agree that it triggers the ordinance. But again, the subjectivity with some of the objective instruments for its interpretation is where I feel like the ordinance falls short. In terms of comparison to 88 Thomas, and this is a point well said and I'm glad someone else saw it as well and mentioned it, is that it's pre-current ordinance, which means it's useful in looking at the overall impact, but that impact we can no longer affect. Meaning, there is no retroactivity in this law that allows us to really use it as part of the analysis. And again, the specific circumstances as laid out in the December 2011 staff report by Tim Toon, our previous senior planning, a senior planner, specifically states that there are certain conditions on G.1.83 where the subject property, which was 88 Thomas Avenue, has certain, basically, unusual circumstances which were addressed, right? So again, that is something that's useful in terms of overall determination, but in the bottom-line analysis should not play a role. The analysis that's laid out in the ordinance has objective measurement terminology, but creates an interpretive metric that makes it almost just, it's just almost, I don't know, there's really no way to measure that without having some sort of subjectivity. The public view, for instance, does not cover private views. But again, you can argue that public means every community member, right? And private can mean any one singular point of view. And so how do you weigh something like that when you say it's part of the community? If you're thinking community as a real holistic entity? So that leads to the question of, does the public view of something that a community member says is equivalent to 700 feet, which is the equivalent of two football fields, how does that impact in the overall point of view of the entire mountain range when you're coming from certain points of views as dictated by the ordinance, which tells you specifically that there's only certain places, i.e. the Bay Trail along the Brisbane Lagoon and Bay Trail along the Sierra Point shoreline? And only those points, right? One of the written comments was that the commission is tasked with making sure that we include the future of Brisbane in our analysis? We are including the future of Brisbane. We're talking about a community member who might be, who wants to create this house to live in Brisbane. We don't know. There was some contention from previous meeting where this person may or may not have that true intention and is, I guess, just to flip the property. But there's no such proof. And so that would be something that we're not allowed to consider as part of our analysis. We only have what the evidence shows. A speaker mentioned about the lot coverage, the atrium. And true, there may be some sort of considerable or possible interpretation that there is an undermining of the spirit of the law in terms of, you have four walls, there's no coverage, there's no roof. Does that make it part of the overall lot coverage? I think that's actually a side issue. I think the issue is, when applied to the actual ordinance, it asks the commission to look at the property in the way that preserves the public view, that has community-wide value from a certain perspective. And arguably, an open atrium does not block the view necessarily from certain vantage points, depending on how tall the wall actually is, right? So that's open also. In terms of exceptions to the law and how various community members interpret the exceptions, the exceptions I would have to raise is that they already exist. The law says that you can build there. So with respect to the options that were given, which are listed on G.1.6, which the commission is allowed to decide or choose from, we can, one, approve the project as presented because it meets the requirement, at least minimally permitted by the ordinance due to various interpretations. Two, approve the project with modified conditions, which is also arguably an option because there's been reasonable suggestions as to what can be done to better meet the ordinance, to meet community concerns. Three, deny the project. There's no basis to deny the project entirely because there's too many variables in place that are open to interpretation. Four, deny the project without prejudice is an option because it allows the applicant to make the modifications, incorporate the modifications as suggested by the community to address his concerns. Five, to grant extension up to 90 days, but then that is up to the applicant to actually make a written request to the commission to do so. So thank you for bearing with me. But those are some of the thoughts I wanted to share with the community, with the commission, as to where we stand and what we need to take into account when we actually make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think I would want to see if the applicant is willing to make some modifications. I think that there is enough evidence that it will block some of the ridge lines. So I think we can ask for some modification. And the question is, can the applicant and can the commission work together on this to achieve something that in the end may actually look a lot better? You know, the inside, I know the applicant is in love with the inside. I mean, it's just beautiful. There's no doubt about it. It's beautiful. I have lived. I have lived in a house, there's many, many houses in San Francisco that have interior courtyards. I love interior courtyards. I lived in one for 17 years. I walked around the interior courtyard all day long for 17 years. It was so beautiful. But I think that there are certain, you know, I would think there can be some modifications that could actually make the outside an improvement, something that would actually create a little more variety. It kind of looks like it's just stuck there. You know, it's stuck there and it's huge. And I think that together, I would like to work with the applicant and the architect and to maybe incorporate some of what the community has suggested. And, you know, and you could possibly love the outside equally. You know, I'm not sure, once it's built, that you can actually love the way it looks. It looks like it's just huge and it's just sitting there. So that is something I would like to ask the applicant and see if we can work together to make some modifications.
Commissioner, the chairman, before we ask the applicant, we have to make a position and take a vote by the commission.
I understand that, but that, but I'm...
That's your view, so...
That's correct. I think we're each bringing to the table our view.
Yeah.
And that's my view, is that I think there's room for improvement. And I'm not saying that we should bring this to vote, but everyone is making their opinions known, and that's my opinion.
Okay. Okay. My opinion is that, once again, I will say the same thing as I said earlier, that this whole hearing is based on the views of the San Bruno Mountain. If there was no blockage of the view, I don't think we'll see anybody here. I don't think the people will be really concerned about the indoor patio. I don't think the people will be that much concerned about the mass or blockage, you know, the look of the house itself. That's a totally different issue in terms of the visual impact of the project itself. And I don't think we discussed it very much at all here in terms of the visual impact. I think the 90% of the discussion was based on whether it's blocking the view of the San Bruno Mountain. That was the emphasis here, and you can tell by looking at the people here, the presentation they made, taking the pictures and all that, that was the main driving force for the people to come here. As you can recall, that we had such an extensive discussion, we were expecting an extensive discussion on EIR, on the major project that we have in front of us, and how many people showed up? No one. So this is driven by, only by the views and the opinion of some of the residents here that consider that it's blocking the view, or it's making the undesirable addition to the mountain. And that seems to be the issue. And as I mentioned earlier, that I was totally against this particular ordinance, and if you look at the records earlier on when we voted on that, I said all along that it's completely subjective, you know, the ordinance, and there is no way we can enforce it. And, you know, to me, looking at one particular small house in the whole big vista, I don't know how I can determine that that is going to be a significant impact on that view. It's impossible for me to do unless and until I have the zoom eyes, and if I can look at it very carefully and say, oh, this is, to me, those towers are more, you know, worse impact on the mountain than any of these homes will do, you know? And so in my opinion, if you want to discuss the fact about the visual impact, then it's a different story. We can discuss that and have the applicant present that, that part's part of it, and let's get the feedback from the community. But I think in this particular case, last two hearings, all we hearing is the views.
Because...
That's the main thrust. And other than, one of the members of the audience brought out about the lot coverage and the patio in the middle, and the patio in the middle, a lot of people like it, a lot of people don't like it, but if you look at majority of the codes that I'm familiar with, any uncovered area is not considered as part of the living space. So based on that, I will agree that the staff has made the proper judgment in terms of calculating the total area. And unless and until we change our code, we cannot make that as part of the building area, no way. Now, enough said in that regard. As far as the views are concerned, again, my position is very simple and very clear that I don't believe that the code is enforceable, that particular municipal code. And I don't think that we can, just based on the, you know, few photographs, we can say one way or the other that, no, he cannot build this house because it's going to block the view. I will say that in my own judgment, if I had to make a judgment, I will not keep this in mind. I will look at the overall picture of the whole, you know, project, and I think that this project has a lot of merits, and I don't have any problem approving that. And as far as the precedence is concerned, we cannot worry about that because when those projects come before us, we're going to go through the same process. And I bet you at that time, we will see how many people show up. Not very many, I think that will be my future prediction. This particular project has brought a lot of attention, and people are worried about the precedence and all that. We cannot worry about the precedence, otherwise we cannot vote on any of the project. Any project we vote on, we creating a precedence. And this particular one, the thing is, is based on our own judgment, based on what we saw. And I look at the Luke's pictures, that gives me a totally different view of the whole thing. I look at the pictures from Stowe, and that's also totally different. I look at the pictures from Karen, and I look at the pictures from the staff, and if you put all these together, it doesn't make any sense for me to have this kind of a code in our city here. And I don't think that it's enforceable, and it's challengeable, too. And that's why I will say that in my decision, I don't want to consider that as part of the huge impact. So far, what I've seen, I don't think it's making that much impact, based on all the photos I've seen it. As far as the mass and all that, I don't think it's creating that much visual impact. So in my opinion, and it's basically my opinion only, that after this particular project, we approve or disapprove, whatever, we should go back on the, and try to change that code. Maybe we should make it clear or eliminate altogether, because every time this issue will come up, we're going to face with the same type of problem. It's highly, highly subjective, and there's no way in the world we can decide one way or the other, because we're looking at not one variable, but thousands of variables here in terms of the human interpretation, your eyes, and you name it. Everything is in there. And in that particular situation, I'm in no position, and I'm not a scientist, or I'm not a photographer, or I'm not a person who can really view that, neither any one of us. And I don't think any of the audiences will be able to really judge which one is correct and which one is wrong, and which one has a more impact and which one has less impact and all that. So if you're looking from that perspective only, I will say that the project has good merits, and I think we should go ahead and approve it.
Who wants to speak next?
Well, this is not going to be popular, but I'm going to say it. There was an exhaustive effort to find fault in this project. I mean, it was fine-tooth comb to find a problem with this project. My photographs that were represented today were taken me off the Bay Trail, in the lagoon, and lying down. That's what this is all about. It's finding fault in this project. I don't have to like this project. I don't have to like large homes, and I don't have to like small homes, but I don't want to get into a place where we've got people coming up saying, monster homes, we've heard that word over and over again, I don't like monster homes. Well, oh, well, so you don't like monster homes. But we don't have anywhere in our ordinance that says, thou shalt not build a home bigger than mine. And I think that's part of what this comes down to, that people don't like big homes, and I'm not playing that game. I don't have to like them either, but that's not the laws on our books today. If the people of the city of Brisbane don't like large homes, what they need to do is go to the city, go to the city council and say, let's change the ordinance restricting the size of homes that can be built in Brisbane. That I can live with. We have to go by those laws. We are not in a position to make this house smaller because people don't like it. So the only thing that I am willing to do, and I feel very strongly about this, is I really would like to address the, I lost my train of thought, the trees and all the landscaping. I truly believe, when you step back and you look at this property, driving up San Bruno Avenue, it's this looming monster property that sits there. What we're greeted with coming up that hill is this huge naked dirt. And yes, it was degraded over time by various people for various reasons, but that needs to be rehabilitated in my perspective. So once there's trees around the property that are fitting in with, I mean, you look at all the photos that were taken, and there's this naked blot on the hill. Everywhere else in Brisbane's got beautiful trees around the properties. Everybody's got beautiful trees in their garden, not this property. It's like this whole corner has been devoid of anything living except for one cactus for a long time. I think we can remedy that, and that would be approve the project with modified conditions. What I would suggest we modify is the landscaping. And I'm not prepared to go anywhere else with this either.
I agree with you. I think that the trees will really bring this property up in terms of the views, and they will, you know, that particular property is entrance to the Brisbane from Sierra Point, and if you look at it, it's just a mountain of dirt, and it's been sitting there for such a long time. And I think that the proper landscaping and the house, the design that is proposed, it will probably bring the, it will improve the visual part of that part of the town, in my opinion.
The other thing that is the other, let's not talk about this tonight, topic that hasn't come up, there is a precedent that would be set if we deny this project. That precedent would actually be in my favor, because I think if we deny this project relative to views, the only views that are significantly affected, in my opinion, are private views around Brisbane. So if we deny this project, we're denying it because of people not wanting their private views disrupted. And if that's the way this commission goes, it's actually in my personal favor, because I have a beautiful view. I recently had an opportunity to buy the property behind me, which would have made sure that no one could ever build behind me and block my view. I chose not to purchase that piece of property. I've got to live with what happens now. And I think if we deny this project, we set a precedent in effect that any time somebody is going to build anything in this town that blocks someone's view, they have a right to complain, because guess what? If we deny this project and anybody tries to build behind my house, I will be the person who complains first.
That's it.
Your turn.
So going back to what we were talking about in terms of applications for the decision for this project, I think that I would like to approve the project with modified conditions or grant an extension if requested by the applicant. In addition to the additional landscaping suggestions raised by both commissioners previously, I wanted to recap pretty much in one sentence, that the law as it exists is the law because the community allowed our elected body to make it law. We are not an elected body, and we must abide by that. The changes that we would like to make require community response, and perhaps this kind of contention will raise the issue to the level it needs to be raised in order for the elected body put in power by our own community to address, but it cannot be addressed here. So those two options are options that I would be okay with.
I'm confused.
So either, right now, basically, I'm ready to approve as well, but either with conditions or to allow the applicant to apply for an extension within 90 days. So approve the project with modified conditions.
What are the modified conditions you have in mind?
About what the modified...
So the modified conditions would be the landscaping at least. I would like to make the suggestion to the applicant to basically go the full monte. There's four suggestions here provided by the ordinance as methods for preserving the view. The applicant has already gone and done three of them. If the applicant would consider varying the building's roof line, that may certainly probably eliminate some of the majority of the community concerns. But again, that would be something the applicant has to decide. I would not recommend that or force that on the applicant. I would just simply request that minimum, the landscaping, with the modification.
I can't wait a minute. Our community...
Through the chair, there's already a condition for landscaping being required as part of this project. It's condition six. So my suggestion would be that if you have additional guidance or language you'd like to see added to that condition, we could handle it in that manner as opposed to continuing it for that particular issue.
Well, when you look at 88 Thomas, there's two trees on that property that are well-established. That helps the look of that entire piece of property. And when you look at the ridge lines around Brisbane and you see, well, say for example, you look from Humboldt Street looking down to Tullary Street, I think one of the most beautiful parts of looking at Tullary Street, and I'm not talking about some of the buildings, that's for sure, is a few of the trees that are on Tullary Street that really make up the beauty. My next-door neighbor's Italian stone pine tree, for example, is, I think, one of the most beautiful monuments, green monuments in town. We need to create some more green monuments. I'm not quite sure how we put that into language, but I would suggest at least two trees, and I don't know what's appropriate, whether, I have no clue whether Buckeye grow there or any other really nice native, but I would be, I think we should...
You're speaking of large trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Trees that are going to add to the, when you're driving up that street, and we said it before, there's this big naked nothing, and looking from around town, you know, you've got that big apartment complex, which is not attractive, and to make that whole corner attractive and probably diminish the look of the house for people who don't like big houses, the trees would be great. So I would propose, I don't know, maybe three or four trees on the property that could add to the value. I'm just pulling a number.
That's a very helpful direction, and, you know, the minutes will be part of this record, and when the landscape plan is submitted, we'll refer back to these minutes and ensure that the intent of the commission's direction is met.
I also am in agreement that I would like to ask the applicant to vary the roof. I think the roof could easily be varied to lower or just give it a little more form. I think it's kind of just straight. Did you want to speak?
Me?
Yeah.
I'd be happy to. I don't know if I can clarify. We have a full landscape plan to submit.
Coming on here.
Excuse me.
This is the time to speak. This is the time to speak.
Pardon?
All right. We are asking.
Hello, I'm David Stahl. There is a full landscape plan that was submitted. There's over 60 trees that have been proposed. A buckeye in the front of the property, over by there were the cactuses. They're almost all native. The only non-native trees were some fruit trees, a couple of citrus trees and things that we threw in that the owner had requested. I purposely.
Trees, David?
Yeah, quite a few. I'm not sure if 60 is the exact number, but if, and I have to go through and count them again, maybe only 30. So I apologize. It may be an exaggeration.
I asked three or four.
Yeah. But my point is, is, last meeting.
You need to be on the microphone, David.
The last meeting, Jamil asked me why I didn't provide a better rendering, showing how the landscaping would essentially mask the house. And my response was that, initially at least, it was important, I believe, to show the community what we're working with. The landscaping will, in fact, the plan, the sketches that I gave you required showing the landscaping at mature growth. Well, all of the plants mature at different times, some in five years, some in 25, 50, 75 years. It's a ludicrous request. Nevertheless, the idea is that a landscape is a living organism. I mean, it mingles together, it supports other living forms, and so what I'm trying to say is that we have, on the lower part, close to San Bruno, the butterfly habitat required or requested grassland to be planted. So that's 2,000 square feet, literally, of public property. Between our parcel and San Bruno, there's a strip about 20 feet wide, the length of San Bruno, or the length of our parcel. That'll all be planted with grasses that we have to protect. I guess, suppose every summer there'll be mowed or something to that effect, maintained for seven years. All the landscaping in that original proposal.
Here we go.
The original contract with the Zhang residence was for a seven-year maintenance agreement. Then there's the perennial herb plantings that, again, sweep down, and this, not only along San Bruno, but then along the abandoned proposed street and the southern or the eastern side of the parcel. That whole area down there gets planted with, again, grasses and herb perennials. All the trees we planted will be on the parcel. I eliminated, originally, I had a number of natives that I personally was a fan of, California sycamore, for one. And talking with Ken, he suggested I remove any trees that might outgrow the house. So there were a few trees, and I don't remember one of this particular species, but three natives that I pulled. The sycamore, arbutus, which is a, anyway.
Why did you pull those?
At the suggestion of the planner. Ken and I were talking, and he said that it might be a disadvantage to have trees that would loom up over the house and further block views of the mountain. He said, he thought it would be a good recommendation on my part to, you know, have a landscape that was within the confines of the height of the structure. So down below, we have taller trees that'll come up 25 feet along the San Bruno side. That's where most of those fruit trees are that, you know, I guess an orange tree in a number of years might get to be 25, but the lemon tree, I'm not worried about 15 feet. The lime, again, some things similar. There's a number of little plum trees and things like that. That butterfly habitat, and I had a, I worked with a state biologist with the previous submittal, and I have to give you her name. I still have her name and phone number. And that was brought to me by Tim Toon, a government agency that was hired by the city to, I guess, write the butterfly habitat or the habitat conservation plan. And so she met with me, and we walked the site, we talked about, we went up into the hillside above all the houses, and we looked at specific trees in there that she said, "These are, you know, this will enhance the habitat." And the butterfly habitat isn't going to be a localized population. It moves. It's like the wind. And it'll be, it actually may descend from further up the hill and come down and choose to reside in this area once it's established. It isn't that, you know, we're going to bring, you know, caged larvae in and release them. It's really, the idea of the habitat is one that, the butterfly is like, almost it's the canary in the coalmine. It's the excuse for the habitat. All of the wildlife clearly is going to benefit by this. I think the concept of, when we get some heavy rains again, if we do, the erosion issue will be greatly mitigated. Another issue that you brought up about the soil, I agree also. I've read the soils report. I mean, it's been, it's been a long time since I read the soils report, but I read that geotechnical report. It is shale. But the concept of slippery soil or something is more of a geotechnical term, a geologic term. And in this case, we're going to be digging into rock, you know, the shale, to put this house in place. And that includes, like, lowering along Thomas just so I can get up onto the property. That lowered the actual presentation of the house. It might be two feet higher if we hadn't, you know, chose to lower things so we could actually get up at an appropriate slope. The other thing about it is that by, the original proposal was horrible, in the sense that we had dug a huge hole, and to drain it, I had pipes that came out from that, just in case something would back up or something, there had to be some subsequent drainage problem or pattern. So I had piping system that would come out, and in order to clear the grade, so it would still drain, I was virtually at the edge of the property line. And so by bringing this up two feet out of the ground, eliminate, I mean, now it just, it's almost at grade. On the, there's a little valley that comes in there naturally, and that's where we meet grade, and so we'll have almost a normal drainage, our natural drainage, out of that courtyard. So the idea of dropping it back down into the ground again, you know, to try to lower the overall height, really problematic and probably, you know, a real impediment to the life, long life of the house or to its success. Furthermore, the roof, it is three and a half feet, but I have to have a roof on the house. At a minimum, that's going to take a foot and maybe a half to drain off of it. A foot for the actual roofing material to get insulation, and then some pitch, a small modest pitch, whatever it be. But that's 18 inches, probably. I, you know.
Can I ask a question? On the tallest part of the building is 25 feet?
From the ground.
From the ground is 25 feet, and the shortest is 15.
Yes.
How long is it going to take an orange tree to get to 15 feet?
Twenty.
Four years?
No, 15 years.
Okay. How long is it going to take a, any of these other natives to get to 15 feet?
Some of them grow really fast, so.
Throw me a number.
Five years.
So in five years, the trees that are planted on this property are probably going to be taller around most of this property.
Problem is that they don't sit on the same level as the, as the house.
Just hear me out. So, so within five years, most of the trees that you're going to plant on this property are going to be approximately at roof height as it stands now, correct?
No.
No?
And that's because the topography around the house, except for that Thomas Avenue, falls away.
Right.
On the north side as well. We're basically cut into the hillside there, and it's very level. And I have a row of fruit trees along that property line up there, which, well, they'll grow fast, and so I would say in five years, those will be about 10 feet tall.
Okay. So that will be shielding.
Virtually.
Public from the house.
Yes. That is.
In how many years?
Five.
Five to 10 to 15. Also, it's not, it's not a fence. It's not a wall. It's a landscape. And so you always see through it. They're all going to drop their leaves, you know, and then you're going to see everything again. And you'll have the stark outlines of, that's why I love the buckeye, because it's just a glorious, you know, native in the way it works. But, you know, I've tried to be an artist with that landscaping, and I'm not, I mean, that's an opinion. I mean, everybody may do it differently. But I've made an attempt to, one, provide trees that flower and fruit. That's a habitat for a lot of wildlife, for the birds as well as the butterfly. And then fruit trees that would specifically support the lifestyle for, you know, the enjoyment of this family. Furthermore, I got into, there's a lot of personal stuff. I mean, I didn't have a lot of guidance. I made a lot of decisions based on what I liked. And so you're, that's one of the other determinants. So anyway, not clear there.
Thank you.
I think a lot of the fear that we've been hearing is that there's going to be this huge house right, you know, as people are looking up, on the street looking up, and there's going to be a huge house, and they're afraid that the house is going to be the dominant feature going into Brisbane. I mean, it's very obvious that's what it is.
I agree.
It's a fear that is pretty much a, probably is expressed by many of the people in Brisbane. You know, you don't want to just look at this monster house. And anyway, that it can be, you know, and whether it's actually blocking the mountain. I mean, that's a real concern. You know, there's going to be, they're concerned about whether it's actually, you know, there's going to be a huge structure that's going to be also, it's going to be more, going into Brisbane is going to be more of a, they're going to be looking at that rather than the mountain, and.
Initially, I think later on they'll be bored with it, and their eyes will go to the landscape, which is normal.
So I think that people have asked that the, either the structure be moved down a bit, or that in some way, so that particular area can be preserved, you know, that, the one area that you've seen that people are concerned with.
Yes.
And I was wondering, I mean, it does look very straight. I mean, it's going to have the plants in front of it. And I was wondering if you and the owners could maybe look at that and see if there's some, something that could be done to kind of modify that a bit? And that's, I'm the only one that is feeling that way, so I'm just asking.
Certainly.
You know, to, to, to kind of make a little bit of a variety in this, you know, it's just a straight line there.
Elevation, those drawings don't do a lot of justice. I tried to, the original plan was much richer in material, much richer in form, and the roof line varied more, although not much. I mean, the height is the same, but this roof line now is turer to the architectural form from which this house is drawn. These homes, when they are built, you know, from history, were much simpler technology. And so they didn't, the reason they would, well, it's for a gazillion reasons, or for a great many, but for protection, for interior, you know, family space, for a lot of reasons. But the basic course of a house that surrounds an open space is that you're building, like these rooms are only 17 feet wide. So that's, this roof pitch is as low as I can get it using conventional roofing material. I can use a hot mop or something like that and get a flat roof. Problematic in a lot of other ways. I, so, we, you know, it's three and a half and 12. It's a very, and then again, I'm only climbing eight feet. So that's, that's really the two feet extra beyond the actual depth of the rafter material. So that's why you only get to a three and a half foot roof height. And so there just isn't much room there to, I mean, yes, we drop it to flat, but then that's a, again, that is a detriment to a lot of houses. And it's a misunderstood, you know.
That's true.
Thing that you force onto a, onto a home. So I'm, I'm not a, I mean, I, anyway, there's, I just have different feelings about that. And if it were to come to that, you know, we'd be, you know, might be have different problems with the house. For instance, you know, I wouldn't suggest a hot mop roof. It's an asphalt emulsion that is constantly have to be reapplied every four or five years. It's, anyway, and I would probably be, it's not, has no insulation properties. I would probably be suggesting something that would be a foam-applied thing that has a white surface to it. I can't imagine what that would, you know, bring up in terms of objection. Every solution will have issues and problems that will, you know, bother us. And so every decision that I make is a compromise. And, I mean, I have looked at the landscaping, and I have, and I've made that drive, and I've driven up the Bay Shore Freeway. I've thought about this ever since it was presented to me in 2004. I've been concerned about the image of your community and what this building, you know, how that affects it. And so on the one hand, I've been given a project, a request by a family, that I've tried very hard to honor. And, and in my way of appeasing the community, I hoped would be in this landscaping, because I really believe that it will be a mixture of plant material that will eventually cloud your view of this house. I say cloud because it, you know, it'll be one of those changing images, but I do think it'll soften the image of the house, and I do think it's the key part of this proposal.
Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Are we ready to make a vote?
I just have one question for staff. So there's a landscaping component to this application. I feel pretty strongly about making sure we can enforce landscaping, because one of the things that I've seen around Brisbane over and over again is landscaping gone awry or landscaping that has been neglected, and we haven't enforced whatever. And I've spoken to you about one particular property that I hope is being addressed because of the eyesore it's turned into, and it should have been kept up and has not been, and that was part of a landscaping agreement. How do we enforce landscaping agreements? How do we make sure that, you know, these trees aren't planted and then they're just let to die? I mean, in all reality, how do we do that?
The basic tool is the landscape maintenance agreement that the owner would have to abide by, and if, if that's not done, then the, the tools are part of that agreement to follow up and essentially repair that landscaping.
Okay. What is the remedy? We'd go in, the city would go in and repair it, and then charge back to the owner? I don't know how this works.
The, obviously, the first course is to get the owner to repair his own landscape and bring it back up to, up to standards. Beyond that, I would have to look at the terms of how we've structured these landscape maintenance agreements and refresh myself on what further recourse the city, you know, would go to.
Because I think this would make all the difference in the world, is to see, I thought three, well, apparently 30 or 60 trees on this property will make, won't look like that. You'll see landscaping.
What I'd suggest is that we can bring your concerns to the city attorney as we draft the language of that maintenance agreement and try to make it as bulletproof as we can.
That would be my major concern for approving this project.
Are we ready to move forward?
I have no further questions.
I think we are ready to move forward, right?
Would you like to?
Okay. I make a motion to approve this application. Part of the suggestions regarding the landscaping brought out by Commissioner Cunningham.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. There's an appeals process. I'm sure this will be appealed. Anyone may appeal the action of the planning commission to the city council not later than 15 calendar days after the commission's action. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. Additional information, please contact the Community Development Department at 415-508-2120. And thank you very much. This was very difficult.
It was one of those subjective decisions that was difficult to make.
All right. Item H.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item H, items initiated by the staff.
I'd just let you know that the city council, next Monday night, will be considering another request to extend the EIR comment period for the baylands. So I will advise you if they grant that request and to what date they extend it.
Anything else?
That's all I have. That's all I have.
Items initiated by the commission.
I have a couple of documents that I picked up from the city of Mountain View, and I'd like to share with the staff as well as the commission. This is a new Mountain View green building code, and maybe we can get some, some hints from this in terms of setting up our own. Looking at that, they went beyond the, what the state requires. So this will be interesting for us to take a look, and at some point, I guess the planning commission is going to look into this, so I think it may not be a bad idea to distribute among the commissioners. The other one is this downtown precise plan that was prepared by Mountain View in 2004. And now they are extending that to the Al Camino Real corridor also. And those of you who have not seen the downtown Mountain View, I will strongly suggest that you make a trip and take a look at that. I used to live in Mountain View back in nineteen seventies, and it was like a dump. And I wouldn't say quite less a dump, but it looked almost like, like our street here, you know, visitation, visitation. And you can see now what they have done in terms of the changes they have made. It's, they turn into a beautiful area. And the way they did that is not only friendly with the traffic, as well as pedestrians and outside dining and all of that. So I thought that this might be a good document for the staff to look at it. And I don't know when we're going to look into the downtown plan again. At one time, we had the sessions where we brought in consultants and all that, and we all met, and I think Commissioner Cunningham was a participant on that too. And then all of a sudden, it just died. It didn't go anywhere. And as a result, the businesses are still same. Nothing has changed on the downtown. We were also looking at the entrance to the, to the city. And I think, I think the, Ken did prepare some drawings at one time, looking at the, beautifying the entrance to the city of Brisbane, and that also died. So I'd, and also when, when Prince was here, he had suggested a number of things over at the Marina, and that project also that stands still, didn't go anywhere. And those are the projects I think we should look into to bring some more businesses here and vitalize the economy of the city here. Right now, there's, you know, if you look at the Marina, almost all of it is pretty much empty. There was one project that was approved, and I think the developer backed out, so it's all fenced off. And it looks ugly, you know, people go there for a bike ride and all that, you just look at it, and it's dusty and nothing there. And such a beautiful coastline, and it's been wasted. Nothing has been done at that point. So I think for the planning part, I will suggest that the planning commission should write a letter, and I don't know whether the other commissioners will agree with me, to the council requesting that these projects should be brought back and looked into, and-
Jamil, at this very moment, there is a charrette that's being developed. When is that going to be?
I was, I apologize, I was going to bring that up. You have the Urban Land Institute is, will be working with, the city will be working with Urban Land Institute to do a, it's actually called the Technical Assistance Panel to look at Crocker Park and to look at the shopping center and the adjacent mixed-use sites that are proposed under the housing element to be designated for mixed-use, and also to take into the, the planning commission's previous recommendation around potential alternative housing sites being along a park as opposed to up on, down on south westerly Bay Shore.
When's that happening, John?
I don't have the precise dates. It's going to be the end of January, though, so.
It will be helpful if you can keep us abreast of that.
Absolutely.
Because I guess the first-
Yes, I, I was at the meeting, and my understanding is members of the community, they want our input, so they, I'm sure they would wish to speak with you as well.
Yeah.
And the commission.
Yeah, I think the problem we facing many, many times in this town is that we start the studies and we never finish it. And then we start another study and we never finish it. And it's the same thing with our general plan. It's already how many years now, and we never finished it. And the policies, five hundred policies, and we never finished it. So that's my, my concern here. I want to at least finish some of that before I retire.
Okay.
And I don't know whether that will happen or not, but I think the downtown should be looked at it very carefully, and something should be done, because we are losing a lot of revenue here. And cities like Mountain View, Edward City, and others, they are really moving forward. You should see the amount of construction going on in those cities. And they are really taking advantage of the growing economy. And I can't understand why Brisbane can attract the, all those dot com communities here. It's so much closer to the airport, closer to the Silicon Valley and all that. I don't know what attempts we are making to bring them here.
Jamil, I hate to interrupt, but it is ten thirty, and I have something that we need to, I want to discuss as well, so I would like to propose that we extend the meeting another ten minutes?
Sure.
Is that?
So we have to take a vote on that, make a-
I make a motion, we extend the meeting for ten minutes?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
So I will be very brief now, and I'll finish quickly. Anyhow, those are the projects that are still lingering around, and nothing has been done on that aspect. And the parking is another one that we need to readdress that at some point, so make sure that we don't forget that. And also, the, there was some suggestion about the Carol-
Okay, that was what I was going to bring up. I would like to step in at this moment, because I want to have some study sessions scheduled for the planning commission. We've talked about it, to study the general plan. At this point, there's, I was going to ask Commissioner Jamil to, to contact Carol and see if she could come, and maybe the two of you could talk about how the general plan, I heard there was something like two hundred or three hundred meetings, I'm not sure how it, and what the focus was, what the intent was, and what the concerns were of that time. It was, it's, and then, moving forward, I'd like us to have some study sessions, and I think this would be-
To those study sessions?
No.
Okay.
No. But what I would like us to do is to study the general plan, and since you've been here all along, you know, I would like to welcome your input, because I think that we're going to be looking at the DEIR, and we need to really, really study the general plan. And I don't know how many sessions it will take, because it's a big general plan, but I think we really do need to do that.
Yeah.
And what I would propose is that, you know, even if there's no other business, that we spend some time in a workshop, open to the public, where we look through the general plan and look through the general plan as it's in the DEIR, you know, the changes, so that when it comes back to us, we will be thoroughly familiar with the general plan.
What about we schedule those at times when there's nothing else on the agenda and just sort of let them happen organically? If nothing's happening on the agenda, rather than council a meeting that we-
Let that be the standing.
I don't, I don't want to cancel, I don't want to cancel any meetings, because I want us to really thoroughly study the general plan.
Right.
Between now and whenever we're going to receive the DEIR back.
We can pop those in when we don't have anything else on the agenda, rather than the last council meetings we've had.
Right.
Right, okay.
And also, we could, you know, schedule it, you know, if there's something else, we can put it on the schedule. If we don't have time, we don't study it. But, you know, I do think we need to, as a group, to study it thoroughly. Otherwise, we're not prepared.
It would be a great, a standing agenda item.
Yeah.
One more thing, a suggestion I will make is maybe we should ask Bill Prince to come over too, because he has went through the process of deciphering five hundred policies, and he was trying to reduce it to a reasonable number and was not able to do that, but he had-